Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Alodin Voyage Parade. I'm Tate Carl Marana. The acronym is ANPAC. I'm the Chief Judge of Council of Court. Today is Class 57, Class 57. What did we learn in Class 56? Well, the first thing we learned is that the audio and visual quality was awfully bright. So, we just like to recognize that all our subscribers and our viewers out there, we know that the video quality wasn't all that good in Class 56. So, we'd just like to say thank you for your patience as ANPAC continues to work on its technical difficulties, alright? What else did we learn in Class 56? Well, we were finishing up learning about Chapter 2 as it relates to the Act of Al-Dusers 1906, right? And what did we learn about Chapter 2? What is Chapter 2 all about? It's about the repression of contraband arms. And who has the delegation of authority orders to oversee the contraband of arms? Well, that's the competent Moors state governments, right? We're learning that the word competent is a very important word as it relates to international law. If you're not competent, meaning having full powers of having an emanating document of the Constitution, have now acceded to treaties, ratified, deposited, and promulgated all your treaties and your Constitution, then you can enforce any Constitution, any treaties, any conventions, any declarations, or any UN Charter, right? So, we're learning that the word competent is very important. So, in Chapter 2 of the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906, the only Moors that can enforce the contraband of arms in terms of licenses and permits against the citizens of the United States, or their subjects, or their proteges, or against Moors nationals of your Moors state, is actually Moors who have the competent authority to oversee the government, right? Those are your elected officials. Those Moors have taken their oath in front of the state, in front of a Moors state judge, right? So, that's what we're learning about Chapter 2. Why did the Sultan set it up like that? The Sultan recognized in order to have integrity domain, you must have laws, and you must have law enforcement that's enforcing those laws. So, therefore, in Chapter 1, it talked about the police. Chapter 2 starts about controlling the arms, right? You're reigning in the order. You're decolonizing Morocco. That's what's happening. You're taking the arms of war, the weapons of mass destruction, away from the colonists that are acting like belligerents. You're now trying to reign in the order. That way, you can maintain what's called equality. The only way you can have equality is that you have peace. And the only way you have peace, you must suppress and repress the usage of arms. Arms are only supposed to be used for defense, and that's it. When you need to use it for offense, it must be justified. And it shall not be justified based upon maintaining any regime or capitulations. So, therefore, the United States has been maintaining what's called a regime of capitulations in Morocco over Moors that have either acquiesced, or against Moors that are now trying to establish their governments, and the United States is still giving pushback. So, therefore, what we gotta understand, when we're controlling the arms, the United States doesn't want us talking about arms. Why is that? Because they know that it's going to put them in a status where they can be a belligerent in Morocco. So, Chapter 2 is very important. It was very important even to the Sultan. Why do I say that? Because five out of the 14 articles in Chapter 2 talked about Council of Court. Five of them. That tells you everything you need to know that we as Moors have the obligation, the delegation of authority orders to prosecute anyone in Morocco that is violating both our Constitution, which is our Moroccan law, as well as our treaties in Morocco. And the treaties say that contraband arms are forbidden, and any other arms must have a license and a permit. It's that easy. And when anyone violates that law, the next thing you're looking at now is what? Arbitration and adjudication, which is prosecution, right? Alright, so let's move on. Today, we'll start getting into Chapter 3 of the Act of Al-Dusers of 1906. But before we open up, you know, we always talk about our Constitution, right? This is ANPAC's Constitution as an example. Every Moor will need to have their own Constitution of each of the territories, right? Under Uti Posidatus Juris, so basically 50 territories in Morocco would need to have their own Constitution, their own state provincial flag, and their own seal, alright? So, we'll talk more about that today as we start going into Chapter 3 of the Act of Al-Dusers. Now, Chapter 3 is about money. It's about now controlling the money of the empire, alright? So, if we start to get into Chapter 3, Chapter 3 is about the Act of Concessions for a State Bank, okay? Now, Chapter 3 has approximately 28 articles within it. Chapter 3 has approximately 20 articles. So, what we're going to do is we're going to read five articles at a time, and then we'll go back and review, alright? So, five articles at a time, and we'll get a nice clean read, and then we'll go back and review, okay? We'll recap, alright? So, as we get started, one of the things the Moors have to understand, this is very important to understand, what is the purpose of us reading Chapter 3 as it relates to a state bank? As the Moors start to restore their states, and at some point, we'll start coming together as interdependent states. We'll have 50 interdependent states in Morocco, right? Because based upon Uti Posidatus Juris and our ergo omnis principles of our indigenous rights, right? Our consanguinity will take over these territories and all the borders, the presupposed borders that the colonists have established. Keep in mind, those borders are not borders based upon some wall, right? There's no fence around all of the particular territories. As an example, such as State of Colorado as a former State of Colorado, right? There's no boundary in terms of a fence. So, all these are invisible lines, right? So, we're still taking over these invisible so-called border lines of the former State of Colorado, right? So, all the Moors would take over those invisible lines and make them your internal borders, but they'll actually be your international borders until all the Moors come together with their conglomerate of states, or interdependent states altogether, okay? So, with that being said, all of the Moors states will need their own individual independent banks in their state, alright? Once we have our individual banks within each state, then we'll establish a national bank. That way, our independent base can now interface with the national bank. So, the purpose of us reading Chapter 3 today is not necessarily understand what happened in 1906, but to really understand what's gonna happen now in the 21st century has a lot to do with the step-by-step process that the Sultan did in 1906. Keep this in mind, Moors. The Act of Al-Dusers of 1906 was basically a starting point, a restart for the Sultan and the empire. So, the Moors of the 21st century are basically starting right where the Sultan was starting in 1906. So, we are reenacting the year 1906 all over again. That's exactly what's happening. So, as we start to read Chapter 3, keep in mind, this is now talking about money. What's money? Gold and silver, right? Your gold coins, your gold bullions, right? That's the money. And then we'll talk about currency, paper, et cetera, right? We'll talk about a state bank. We'll talk about a national bank. These are the type of themes that's on the horizon for competent Moors states, alright? I know the Moors have been talking for decades now about establishing our own money and our own currency, but the reality is, anything we've done prior to having a competent Moors state was all arbitrary, capricious, and patently frivolous. But once we establish our sovereign states of being competent, now, once we have our national bank, we can start to get into what's called minting coins, and then printing paper, right? Getting into now interfacing with world banks, et cetera, alright? So, let's go ahead and get started. So, if we can have mother go ahead and start with Chapter 3.
Chapter 3, Act of Concession for a State Bank. Article 31. A bank shall be established in Morocco under the name of the State Bank of Morocco to exercise the following specified rights, which are granted to it by His Majesty the Sultan for a period of 40 years to date from the ratification of this act. Article 32. The bank which will have power to carry on all transactions entering into the operations of a bank shall have the exclusive privilege of issuing notes to bearer payable on presentation and receivable for public dues throughout the Moors Empire. The bank shall maintain for a period of two years to date from its going into operation cash on hand at least equal to half its notes in circulation and equal to at least one-third after the expiration of said period of two years. At least one-third of such cash on hand is to be gold bullion or gold coin. Article 33. The bank shall, to the exclusion of every other bank or establishment of credit, discharge the duty of dispersing treasurer of the empire. To this end, the Moors government shall take all necessary measures to deposit in the bank the proceeds of the customs revenues exclusive of the part thereof applied to the loan of 1904, and such other revenues as it may designate. With reference to the special tax established in order to carry out certain public works, the Moors government must have the same deposit in the bank as well as the revenues it may later pledge for its loans, the bank being especially charged with the payments thereon, except however in the case of the loan of 1904, which is governed by special contract. Article 34. The bank shall be the financial agent of the government, both within and without the empire, without prejudice to the government's right to apply to other banking houses or establishments of credit for its public loans. The bank, however, shall enjoy in regard to such loans, a right of preference, other conditions being equal, over any banking or credit establishment. For treasury notes or other short-term notes, which the Moors government may wish to negotiate without making it a public issue, the bank shall, however, be charged to the exclusion of every other establishment, with negotiating the same for the account of the Moors government, either in Morocco or abroad. Article 35. The bank shall make advances to the Moroccan government on account current up to a million francs chargeable against treasury receipts. The bank shall likewise open a credit account for the government for the period of 10 years to date from its establishment, such account not to exceed two-thirds of its initial capital. This credit account shall be distributed over several years and employed primarily for the expenses of establishing and maintaining the bodies of police organized in conformity to the decisions adopted by the Conference, and secondarily, for the expenses of such works of public interest as might not be charged to the special fund as provided for by the following article. The maximum rate for these two advances will be 7% bank commission included, and the bank may ask the government to give as security an equal amount in treasury notes. If before the expiration of the said term of 10 years, the Moors government shall contract a loan, the bank would have the right to obtain the immediate reimbursement of its advances made in accordance with the second paragraph of the present article.
Alright, thank you. So, like I said, we're gonna read five articles at a time, right? So, let's go back and reflect on what we've read. Okay, so, as we can see, Article, excuse me, Chapter 3 is about establishing a bank in Morocco. So, Chapter 3, An Act of Concessions for a State Bank. Article 31. A bank shall be established in Morocco under the name of the State Bank of Morocco to exercise the following specified rights which are granted to it by His Majesty the Sultan for a period of 40 years to date from the ratification of this act. Article 32. The bank which will have power to carry on all transactions entering into the operations of a bank shall have the exclusive privilege of issuing notes to bearer payable on presentation and receivable for public dues throughout the Moors Empire, alright? So, immediately, when we start reading Chapter 3, Moors have to have the mindset that obviously we, as sovereign states, need to have our own money. We have to have our own gold in order for us to establish even the banks. The banks are established based upon the concessions of someone interjecting either cash, i.e. currency, or gold bullion. It should be a combination of the two, right? So, what we're learning quickly in Chapter 3, these are concessions for a state bank, okay? So, what I have up here on the board is what I need Moors to start understanding quickly before we start continuously reading the articles of Chapter 3. We must have the proper concepts and context before we keep reading 28 articles of Chapter 3, alright? What is this about? This is about projecting the future for Moors. We have to understand, we have to build the foundation, that way we can get our banking institutions in place. And a part of banking institutions that we have to have gold. A part of banking institutions that we have to get access to printing paper, currency. We have to get access to now having a national bank that now interfaces with world banks. We have to be the plug into the matrix, right? So, what are we learning already? So, we get the proper mindset. Alright, so we know we're talking about the Act of Al-Dusers 1906, which is Chapter 3, Articles 31 through 58. So, what are we learning about? The Act of Concessions for a State Bank. So, for example, every state of the Union, right? As Moors come together, we have our interdependent states. Let's say it's 50 plus Moors states, right? Each state will need to have their own independent state inside of each state, for example. Such as ANPAC State Bank, where it's example, right? It's a placeholder name, right? So, but we'll also need what's called a national state bank. That way, the independent state banks can interface with a national bank. For example, such as a name, the United States of Morocco Bank would be the national bank that interfaces with our independent state banks, right? And that national bank would be governed by the central body government of Morocco, of the empire, alright? So, the United States of Morocco Bank as a placeholder name, that could potentially be the name of the national bank that oversees all 50 Moroccan states, right? Continue. The United States of Morocco Bank, that national bank, and the United States of Morocco's centralized competent government can mint coins, print currency, and interface with world banks, et cetera. So, what's happening here? It's a step-by-step process, right? First, we have to have interdependent state banks, right? So, your first bank would be your own state bank. Then that state bank would interface now with the national bank, right? We need a national bank. Then that national bank would interface with world banks, alright? That should be the basic concept. But obviously, Moors need to have gold in order to establish banks, because you just can't print paper. It can't be a floating currency, right? You need gold, right? Alright, so here's what we need to do. Before we go any further, let's start understanding a little bit of history, shall we? Let's put some context to this, alright? So, you can see all the foreign part powers, what they call the signatory powers, which is the 12 colonist states, signed this treaty with the Sultan, okay? Sultan made number 13. The State Bank of Morocco is what they named it. The State Bank of Morocco is what they named it. They're talking about this in 1906. This was the agreement, right? Okay. Let's learn a little bit of history. Let's learn a little bit of history about what took place, a series of themes that took place that the Moors in the 21st century would have to do these same steps. Now, it won't take many years to do it, but we must understand the concept and the context of what took place. We can learn a lot from the good, bad, and indifference of what happened to the Sultan and what happened to the Kingdom of Morocco as it relates to finance, okay? Let's learn a little bit of history, okay, mother?
Act of Al-Dusers 1906, State Bank of Morocco, established 1907. The Bank Al-Maghrib is the central bank of the Kingdom of Morocco. It was founded in 1959 as the successor to the State Bank of Morocco, established 1907. The Bank Al-Maghrib holds reserves of foreign currency estimated over 36 billion in US currency. In addition to currency management, the Bank Al-Maghrib also supervises several private banks supplying commercial banking services. The bank has a branch in Casablanca and agencies in other cities in Morocco.
Okay, thank you, mother. So, what's happened? So, as you can clearly see, the State Bank of Morocco was established in 1907, and then it was superseded by the Bank of Al-Maghrib in 1959, alright? So, that's the bank name. The Bank Al-Maghrib is the name of the bank over in the Kingdom of Morocco, alright? When you start understanding the history quite quickly, what you start understanding is that, first of all, the Bank of Maghrib also supervises several private banks supplying commercial banking services. The bank has a branch in Casablanca and agencies in other cities throughout Morocco. So, what's happening here? So, according to the treaty, they were following instructions, right? They did establish the State Bank of Morocco, and the State Bank of Morocco was superseded in 1959, okay? But one of the things you have to quickly assess right here says, "The Bank of Maghrib also supervises several private banks supplying commercial banking services." So, soon you see the word "private," you know that's not government-controlled, right? So, the government was overseeing the Bank of Al-Maghrib, but then it had also private banks that it was managing, alright? So, Moors gotta quickly start understanding is, as Moors, we wanna make sure that our banks are controlled by our Moors governments. As soon as you let the privateers come in and start controlling banks, the whole system goes to crap, because they only care about their shareholders. And which we'll learn more about shareholders as we continue to read in Chapter 3. Everything must be controlled by the government in terms of controlling the currency and the gold of your banks. Soon as you let the privateers come in, they will run off with all of any of the profits that they're making, alright? So, let's continue to read. What are we learning right now? We're learning a little bit of history about the Bank of Morocco, and now the new name is Bank of Maghrib, okay? Let's continue. Okay, mother?
In 1958, the Moroccan government commenced negotiations with France and the State Bank of Morocco to reclaim for itself the right to issue money. The decree number 1.59.233 of 30 June 1959 created the Bank of Morocco, which took over the issuance of money the next day and replaced the State Bank of Morocco. In October, the Bank du Maroc issued a new currency, the Durham. The Bank of the Act of 21 April 1967 enhanced the role of Banque du Maroc, particularly in the field of banking supervision. In 1974, the Bank du Maroc commenced issuing the Centime as a fraction of the Durham, replacing the franc. In March 1987, the bank adopted the name Bank Al-Maghrib. That same month, the bank established Dar Asika, the unit that be responsible for printing banknotes and printing coins. A new banking act in July 1993 created a unified regulatory framework for all credit institutions. This act strengthened the Bank Al-Maghrib in its role of regulating and supervising credit institutions in Morocco. October saw the passage of amendments to the bank statutes that clarified its role in monetary policy and that granted it greater autonomy. In 2006, law number 76-03, promulgated by Dahier number 1-05-38 of 20 Chao 14/26, November 23, 2005, repealed Dahier number 1-59-233 of 23 Hija 1378, June 30, 1959, which had created Bank Al-Maghrib. The new law reinforced Bank Al-Maghrib's independence in terms of monetary policy and provided a legal basis for its responsibility for the payment system. The new law established the bank as a public legal entity controlled by the Account Commissioner, the Government Commissioner, and the Court of Account. Law number 34-03 expanded the jurisdiction of the banking law over certain institutions engaged in banking activities, redefining the roles of the National Council of Credit and the Committee of Credit Establishments, reinforced Bank Al-Maghrib's autonomy in banking supervision, and instituted a number of other measures covering the protection of clients of credit institutions and the treatment of credit institutions in distress.
Alright, thank you, mother. So, that was a very brief background on some of the step-by-step process that the Sultan went through between 1906, leading up into the later years of the 1900s. Why is this important to understand? What we quickly start to assess is that the Sultan was working hand-in-hand with the colonists to try to build up his cash reserves and his gold bullions again, because the empire had started to spiral. You always have to remember that the colonists were carving up Africa, right? So, the colonists were coming in and colonizing Africa, and the Sultan wanted to reign in the order. But the Sultan also was going broke, because the Sultan was belligerent himself. He's spending all his money. He's in constant wars. So, the empire started to spiral, and the colonies were taking over Africa, right? So, once we start to read a little bit about this history, what's the main thing you need to start understanding here? Is that France, once again, was involved, right here. In 1958, the Moroccan government commenced negotiations with France and the State Bank of Morocco to reclaim for itself the right to issue money. So, what was happening? The Sultan at the time didn't have his own money. He was using the money of other people's countries, such as Spain, Great Britain, and France. He also had a loan. We'll learn more about the loan of the year 1904. So, the Sultan was borrowing money from the colonists. This is another reason why he was spiraling out of control, because the colonists had to lean on the Sultan and all of his administration, because the Sultan was borrowing money. But at a certain point, as the Sultan started to pay back the money, right, the funds, eventually, he was able to establish his own money, his own currency, and start to mint it, alright? So, when we start reading a little bit about this history, you gotta understand, in the very end, it tells you something. If all this started in 1906, somewhere around 2005, right? 2005 and beyond, the Sultan turned king. Now, finally started to get to a point where he's now getting what's called autonomy, okay? So, we'll read this last paragraph so you get a basic understanding of what I'm talking about, alright? In 2006, law number 76-03 promulgated by Dahier number 1-05-38 of 20 Chao 14/26, which is the Islamic calendar, right? 23rd November 2005, repealed Dahier number 1-59-233 of 23 Ahid Ahah Ahid 1378, 30 June 1959, which had created Bank of Al-Maghrib. The new loan reinforced Bank Al-Maghrib, so he borrowed money, independence in terms of monetary policy, and provided a legal basis for its responsibility for the payment system. The new bank established the bank as a public legal entity controlled by the Account Commissioner, the Government Commissioner, and the Court controlled by the Account Commissioner, the Government Commissioner, and the Court of Account. Law number thirty-four dash oh three expanded the jurisdiction of the banking law over certain institutions engaged in banking activities, redefined the roles of the National Council of Credit and the Committee of Credit Establishment, reinforced Bank of Al Maghrib autonomy. You see that word, autonomy? So, the Sultan, excuse me, the King in two thousand five, two thousand six, was finally getting autonomy away from the colonies that he had actually borrowed money from. This is what he's been trying to build up to, to control the narrative of his own money in his own state, the Kingdom of Morocco, alright? So going back to nineteen oh six, the Sultan at the time was spiraling. He didn't have control of his finances. The colonies gave him a loan in nineteen oh four. Great Britain and Spain, if you go back and do the history, it was called a loan of nineteen oh four with Morocco. Okay, the loan of nineteen oh four with Morocco, Great Britain, and Spain. France comes in and also starts loaning money to the Sultan, right? So you've got these three colonial powers loaning money to the Sultan, and now the Sultan has to repay that loan, alright? But the Act of Al Jusseris also set it up where the Sultan could find different ways of bringing in taxes and revenue, right? That which is Article sixty of the Act of Al Jusseris talks about the Qadi creating taxes and revenue, right? In order to pay back these loans, okay? So, what's important here to understand? The Moors have to have their own autonomous banks, our independent banks, state banks. Then we establish a national bank, right? All these things have autonomy that we control as a government. Then we can interface with world banks, but we still have control over our national banks, or we still have control over our independent banks. Now, we cannot do any of that without any gold, right? Gold is the number one standard that we need to establish the banks, alright? So, what needs to happen? As we're doing the background, do a little bit of history right here, okay? What we need to do is, all of our gold has to be reposited, re-posited from the colonies, who have been holding on to our gold in their trust systems, right? They're holding on to our gold as trustees over our vast estates, alright? So, you have to understand the difference between deposit and deposit, let's look up that word. So if the Moors, all of your states will have a treasury, right? You'll have a treasurer that's overseeing the treasury of each independent state. And this, once we establish our centralized government, we'll all also have a treasury there with a treasurer, right? So the definition of treasury, mother?
A place or building in which stores of wealth are reposited, particularly a place where the public revenues are deposited and kept, and where money is dispersed to defray the expenses of government. That department of government which is charged with the receipt, custody, and dispersment pursuant to appropriations of the public revenues or funds.
Okay. So the treasury has two statuses. The first one is, a place or building in which stores of wealth are reposited. Well, what's a reposited? That's a return of our gold. They have to return our gold. A reposited is something that means to be returned. But what's a deposit? A deposit comes from what? Revenues. So as we learn in the Act of Al Jusseris, Article sixty, where it starts talking about the Qadi, the Qadi is responsible for collecting what? Taxes and revenue, right? That's what you call deposit, right? You're depositing revenues, but when it comes to our gold, they have to reposit, that has to be a reposit, meaning a return of our gold, right? So the difference between the two words. Well, how do we get our gold back? Alright, let's talk about that. According to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, excuse me, Treaty of Act of Al Jusseris nineteen oh six, Articles thirty-one, thirty-two is what we've read thus far, right? As you can see, in Article thirty-two, Article thirty-two starts to talk about what? Starts to talk about the gold bullion, or gold coin. So if this is a treaty, that means the Moors are already entitled to what? Their gold bullion and gold coin. But let's read this paragraph, the bank. "The bank shall maintain for at least a period of two years, to date from its going into operation, cash on hand at least equal to half its notes in circulation, and equal to at least one-third after the expiration of said period of two years. At least one-third such cash on hand is to be gold bullion or gold coin." Well, this is a treaty. How can the Moors establish a bank? They're supposed to have gold as a part of the due process, right? Of establishing a state bank. Because according to treaty, we have to have gold, okay? Well, according to your own treaty, it's already letting you know you're supposed to get your gold back. Because remember now, this is concessions of a state bank. And the colonies are now returning some gold back to this empire. You gotta remember now, the colonies have been harvesting it, the colonies have been cultivating the gold out of the land of the Moors, okay? So, listen. Very important to understand. This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-two. They both have the same language, right? It's the same provision, hasn't changed between the two years. Mother, can you read Article twenty-two for me, please?
"If an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no consul, the effects shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust until the party shall appear who has a right to demand them. But if the heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend agreeably to that will as soon as the consul shall declare the validity thereof."
Okay, so Article twenty-two is about the Moors' estate, their property, their effects, their resources being returned to them without interruption. But who has to file a deed? The consul, right? Which is our Consul of Court of each of our states, as well as eventually our national government, as a placeholder name, United States of Morocco, as our centralized government also will have course, right? Overseeing all of the territories, all the states of Morocco, right? So what's happening here in Article twenty-two? This is specific instructions for our effects, i.e. our property, i.e. our gold, to be returned without interruption. Well, who has to make the demand? Consul of Court. Now, we learned this in France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, page two oh two tells the Moors specifically, the only way to enforce Moroccan laws against the United States is that you gotta utilize Consul of Court ministerial decrees. And by that way, in that way only can the laws be enforced against the United States as long as we're exercising our treaties, right? So here, you're exercising your treaty through Consul of Court. That way, all of your property, right? All your property and all your effects are returned, delivered to the state without interruption. But let's now take a look at an easier read, shall we? This is ANPAC Study Session. We're going to study, and when we start comprehending how we need to plug and play with Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Alright, so, this is Article twenty-two. All the red text is what ANPAC added. You know, I added because it's a study session. That way, it reads a little easier, so you will comprehend exactly how do you enforce Article twenty-two as it relates to any property, any effects, any resources, right? Whether it's your land, et cetera, right? Okay. Alright mother, if you can start from the top, ANPAC Study Guide.
ANPAC Study Guide on how to plug and play with the use of Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two, "If a former Moor subject shall die in Morocco and no more state government shall appear, the United States of America's consul shall take possession of the Moor subject's gold effects. And if there shall be no United States of America consul, the gold effects shall be deposited in the hands of the UN Charter Trusteeship Council, Chapters twelve, thirteen, or a foreign state treasury worthy of trust until the competent Moor state government shall appear who has a full powers state right to demand the United States of America or any foreign trusteeship council. But if their heir, known as the competent Moor state government of the foreign Moors subject's gold, deceased be present, the gold property shall be delivered to the competent Moor state government without interruption. And if a competent Moor state government constitution shall appear, the gold property shall descend agreeably to the competent Moor state government as soon as the competent Moor consul court shall declare the validity thereof."
Okay. So, keep in mind, we've added text to make Article twenty-two read a little smoother based upon the plug and play of us talking about gold specifically, right? But who can demand the gold? Only competent Moor state governments, right? So that's the way we have to read this. Remember, the treaties are written in what's called vice versa. They're written in light manner, right? So some of the articles, what they've done to us, we can do to them, because it's in light manner, it's a contract, alright? Okay, so, Article twenty-two. "If a former Moor subject shall die in Morocco..." Why do I say "former Moor subject"?
Because he has to return to become a national.
That's right. So the former Moor subjects are now returning to Morocco, right? So the former Moor subject, former Moor subject. If someone has either returned to Morocco, or someone who has died in the jurisdiction of the United States, they're still former. Why? Because now they're deceased, right? So it has a duality meaning to it. Former means you returned to Morocco, now you're a former Moroccan subject that's still alive. Or because now you're deceased in the United States jurisdiction. Now you've become a former Moroccan subject because you're deceased, okay? Gotta get that duality understanding. Alright, let's start from the top. Article twenty-two, "If a former Moor subject shall die in Morocco and no more state government shall appear, the United States of America's consul shall take possession of the Moor subject's gold effects. And if there shall be no United States of America consul, the gold effects shall be deposited in the hands of the United Nations Charter Trusteeship Council, Chapters twelve, thirteen, or a foreign state treasury worthy of trust until the competent Moor state government shall appear who has full powers state rights to demand the United States of America or any foreign trusteeship council. But if the heir, known as United States of America or any foreign trusteeship council..." Let me start that sentence over.
But if the heir, known as the competent Moor state government...
Yeah, so let me start that sentence over. "But if the heir, known as the competent Moor state government of the former Moor subject's gold, deceased be present, the gold property shall be delivered to the competent Moor state government without interruption. And if a competent Moor state government constitution shall appear, the gold property shall be seen agreeable to that competent Moor state government as soon as the competent Moor consul court shall declare the validity thereof." So it's two themes going on here. The first thing that's going on is, if the Moors die. Remember now, in the treaty, the United States is saying Moors don't exist. All the Moors are Negro, Black, and colored, right? So the United States has hypothocated all of the effects, the property of the Moors, because they said the Moors are dead. They're dead at sea, right? Under admiralty law, all the Moors have perished, right? They've perished, they're capsized in a ship, in a vessel, right? So therefore, the United States of America has deemed all the Moors as being dead. Or they deem them as being subjects. According to Article three, section two, clause one of their constitution says, "Moors are subjects," which means they're not Moors. They're citizens in the United States, right? No matter what their nationality is, they're just subjects because they're stateless people, because the Moor state governments got you searched, right? Under usurpation, under regime of capitulations, under hypothocation. So therefore, our bloodlines were extiated because they said we were dead, and that we could not be the successors, the beneficiaries of our own effects, alright? So when you start to read this, now you start to understand the Moor state has to be the beneficiary of the Moor's property. The Moors couldn't be beneficiaries as individuals. The state had to be the beneficiary. And through the state, the state sets up a national trust, and the state sets up a treasury, and the state sets up your independent state bank. Starts to make the distributions, starts to now extend the sovereignty to each Moor's national, because the state is sovereign. The state is sovereign, and the state extends sovereignty to you. So therefore, how would your effects return? Your Moor state government will return it to you. But your Moor state government first has to go to the trustees that's been holding on to our effects, i.e. our gold, right? So how do we get our gold back? We make a demand, and we make that demand through Consul of Court. And our gold has to be returned without interruption, right? Immediately, okay? So let's take it from the top. Article twenty-two, as a study purpose. "If a former Moor subject shall die in Morocco and no more state government shall appear, the United States of America's consul shall take possession of the Moor subject's gold effects. And if there shall be no United States of America consul, the gold effects shall be deposited in the hands of the United Nations Charter Trusteeship Council, Chapters twelve and thirteen, or a foreign state treasury worthy of trust." Now you know, on the back of the United States of America's currency, they say what? "In God, we trust." They tell you right there and there, what does God stand for? It's an acronym for what? Government Ordinance Department. So their government is overseeing a trust. Who else is overseeing the trust? The United Nations, right? So let's go over to the United Nations. This is the Charter of the United Nations nineteen forty-five. This one right here is chapter thirteen, okay? So I talked about chapter twelve, but I'm showing you chapter thirteen based upon the type, okay? So, chapter thirteen. Mother, can you read a little bit about what we got going on here?
The Trusteeship Council, Composition, Article eighty-six. The Trust, one, the Trusteeship Council shall consist of the following members of the United Nations. A, those members administering trust territories...
Pause. Immediately, what's happening? The United Nations Charter has set up a Trusteeship Council. To oversee what? Okay, Article eighty-six, number one. "The Trusteeship Council shall consist of the following members of the United Nations. A, those members administering trust territories." They're overseeing the trust territories. But what about the trust territories? What are the trust... What are the trust territories? That's the Moors states. That's the Moors land. That's the empire. So the Charter's overseeing the empire because the Moors are deceased. And our property has been what? Deposited in the hands of the Charter. Take from top. If a former Moors subject shall die in Morocco, so the Moors died in Morocco, and no more state government shall appear, the United States of America's counsel shall take possession of the Moors subject's gold effects. And if there shall be no United States of America counsel, the gold effects shall be deposited in the hands of the United Nations Charter Trusteeship Council, Chapters twelve and thirteen, or a foreign state treasury worthy of trust. So what's the trust about? The trust is all about, go back to the Charter. The trust. What's the trust? The trust is the land. But wait a minute. Where does gold come from? The land. So the colonists have been doing what? Harvesting and cultivating the gold out of our land. That's where the trustees come in, they oversee the effects, all the property, all the resources that belong to the Moors, all the, anything agricultural, right? Everything that comes, that's in our land, that comes out of our land. The land itself, right? Including the air rights, everything. The sea rights, everything. The United Nations has been overseeing the trust. Who else been overseeing the trust? The United States of America have been overseeing the trust. And the United States of America has extended that trust over to what they call their international organization, known as the United States. The United States is what you call an intergovernmental organization that works on behalf of the United States of America. Because the United States of America is the contracting state on a treaty of peace and friendship, not the United States. The United States is not a state. Only a state can be a contracting party to a treaty. Even though the United States International Organization has ratified their treaties, they still are not the contracting state to the treaties. So therefore, the United States of America is overseeing the trust because under regime of capitulation, they're overseeing the land. But also, the Charter members also know, according to the council, that they also know they have an obligation to make sure that their members are administering over the trust territories as well, as what? Referees, as guardians, right? So this is what Moors got to understand as it relates to banks. When we start talking about our banks, we got to get our gold back, right? So our treaties automatically, Act of Albersaris talks about gold bullions or gold coin in a treaty that we have to have in order to establish our banks, right? Well, how do we get our money back, right? Gold is the money. Okay, now you go over to Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Article twenty-two. Right? Now you're trying to get what? You're trying to get your effects, right? Deposited. Now you want your effects deposited in the hands of a person worthy of trust. And who's the person? The Moors states. States are persons, according to the Treaty of Montevideo, nineteen thirty-three. Article one, states are persons. So therefore, we need to get our gold returned to the person, and the person is the Moors state. And the Moors state is worthy of trust. Okay? Now, let's go over. Let's take a look at the Declaration, right? The Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, written in two thousand and seven. All right, then Moors have to accede to this declaration. You want to accede to it and ratify it through your state in order to enforce it. Let's take a look at what's called the annex, i.e. the pre-annum. What is the United Nations trying to tell the Moors? All right, let's, let's read it. Mother, from the top.
Considering also that treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements and the relationship they represent are the basis for a strengthened partnership between indigenous peoples and states. Acknowledging that the Charter of the United Nations, the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, as well as the Vienna Declaration and Program of Action, affirm the fundamental importance of the right to self-determination of all peoples by virtue of which they freely determine their political status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development.
Okay, thank you. What is the United Nations, one hundred and ninety-three member states, trying to tell us? Well, the first thing you got to understand is, what is the United Nations? The United Nations is an international organization that states have bound themselves and looking at the United Nations as an H.R. department, right? A referee to come in and deal with disputes as it relates to state-on-state disputes, right? So when you see the word, "United Nations," what is a nation? States. Nation means state, state means nation. So it's the United States of the world coming together, looking for an organized, dual society to govern all states around planet Earth, okay? But listen. What are the United Nations trying to tell the Moors? They gave you the answers to the test, to the test in the annex, listen. Considering also that treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements and the relationships they represent are the basis for a strengthened partnership between indigenous peoples and states. They give you answers to the test, what's the answer? You Moors need to enforce your treaties because the treaties is the basis for strengthening your disputes between states. They give you the answers to the test. You got to enforce your treaties, Moors. Did it say enforce the Constitution of the United States of America? No. Did it say enforce the Constitution of the United States? No. Did it say enforce the Constitution of any foreign state? No, it says enforce what? Treaty. Why treaties? Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. And it's telling Moors, right in the annex, start with your treaties because your treaties tell you, you need a state. Then it continues. Acknowledging that the Charter of the United Nations is trying to tell you, go back and read the United Nations. Charter. The International Covenant on Economic, what's economic? Gold, right? Economics about financial institutions, banks. Social, what's social? An organized, dual societies, your society, social, right? Social studies, isn't that what we learned in school, social studies, right? And cultural rights, check that word out, cultural rights. What's the cultural right? The colonists have been cultivating, cultivating our gold right out of our land. They've been harvesting, harvesting the gold right out of our land. And we got to write through our treaties because the treaties is the basis that strengthens your position as Moors. Whenever you have, whenever you have a dispute between states, you use the treaties. And the treaty said you got every right to now enforce the Charter and enforce the economics of getting the gold, the cultural rights, your gold rights that's been harvested out of your land, you got a right to get it back. Continuing, and the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, as well as the Vienna declarations, I talk about the Vienna declarations all the time, and Program A of Action, affirm the fundamental importance of right to self-determination of all peoples. What is the self-determination of all peoples? People have to return to what? A state. That's the self-determination, Moors. It's not about you being Kendrick Bay. It's about the Kendrick Bay return to a Moors state government. That is self-determination. Self-determination is all about the state of the peoples by virtue of which they freely determine their political status. What's political? State. Freely determine political state status and freely pursue their economic, social, and cultural development. What is this all about? This is about state banks. They know the Moors have to get back their gold in order to establish banks. That's why they keep talking about this economic, social, and cultural rights. They tell you to enforce your treaties, Moors, if you want to get your gold back. That's what the Moors got to understand, this is all about enforcing your treaties. Okay. So as you can see, the United Nations has given you the answers to the tests and enforced your treaties. Your treaties give you strength to deal with disputes between states. And you got every right to utilize the Charter of the United Nations and all of their declarations to enforce your free determination of your state's status in order to enforce all of the cultivated rights. And what are cultivated rights? The return of your gold. That must be understood. All right, we want to scroll down to Articles thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Okay. Article thirty-seven, of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, all right? So mother, if I can have you read Article thirty-seven.
Indigenous peoples have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements concluded with states or their successors, and to have states honor and respect such treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements. Number two. Nothing in this declaration may be interpreted or diminishing or eliminating the rights of indigenous peoples contained in treaties, agreements, or other constructive arrangements.
Okay, so what are we learning immediately in Article thirty-seven? Here we go. Indigenous peoples. Moors. Moors have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements concluded with states or their successors, and to have states honor and respect such treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements. You see how they give you the answer to the test? States are making these arrangements, not individual Moors. The Moors specifically, what's happening? You see this word right here, successors? The successors, who are the successors? Those are what you call the Moors state governments now succeeding the former corporate states of the United States. Where the successors, where the succeeding state under utiposidatus juris and enforcing ergo omnis principles upon the colonial, corporate, former states of the United States. That must be understood. That's reading from the top. Keeping in mind, the Moors have to ratify this, right? We have to accede to it and ratify it through the state to make it part of our internal law, or else you can't enforce it. Article thirty-seven, the indigenous people have the right to the recognition, observance, and enforcement of treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements concluded with states. So how do Moors have to enforce thirty-seven? You have to conclude it with your state. You have to accede to it and ratify it through your government, right? The legislative branch, the delioizee, and the seyahah pass a bill, right? They ratify a bill, they send that bill over to the executive branch. Where the waziris signs it into law and it becomes the internal law of your state. The rights of indigenous people, you cannot use it, you cannot enforce it until you have acceded to it. You have done what? Concluded this declaration with your state, Moors. They give you the answers to the test. Or their successors, who are the successors? Your state is the successor, as well as the nationals of your state. The government and its officials are the successors who are enforcing the state law, all right? Let's continue. From the top. Moors have the right to the recognition, observation, observance, and enforcement of treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements concluded with states or their successors, and to have states honor and respect such treaties. So the Moors have to respect their own treaties through statehood and now the United States of America as the contracting state has to respect it too, okay? Agreements and other constructive arrangements, all right? So what's happening? Number two, nothing in this declaration may be interpreted as diminishing or eliminating the rights of Moors contained in treaties, agreements, and other constructive arrangements. Why are we reading this? Because we're talking about our gold, right? What about our gold? We have a right as Moors to enforce the treaty. That's the only way you get your gold back, you enforce it through the treaty, right? The counsel court makes a demand and the validity thereof that you are the competent Moors state that's now through your counsel court demanding for the gold to be returned in order for us to establish an independent state bank. We can never establish a national bank without our gold. Who has our gold? The United States of America has our gold. And they have to deposit it or deposit it back into the hands of the person, i.e. the Moors state, worthy of trust. Every independent state of Moors has to set up their national trust and their treasury, all right? Let's move on to Article thirty-eight. From the top.
Article thirty-eight, states in consultation and cooperation with indigenous peoples shall take the appropriate measures, including legislative measures, to achieve the ends of this declaration.
All right, so what are we learning here? States. In consultation and cooperation with Moors states shall take the appropriate measures, including legislative measures, to achieve the ends of this declaration. What does this mean? Everybody has to, first of all, ratify this declaration. Keep in mind that Barack H. Obama signed it on an international level as the United States of America, but the United States International Organization never ratified it. So who needs to ratify it? The Moors state governments have to ratify it, right? Their legislative branch and executive branch. So what happens then? It becomes now your legislation. So what do we do next? Now we enforce that legislation upon who? The United States International Organization and the United States of America as being the contracting state that's ultimately responsible because they are the party on the treaty, right? Y'all, the parties must be known. So what's happening? It's giving you instruction, Moors, you have to ratify this declaration in order to enforce it. Once you enforce it, what do you enforce it with? Your treaty, you use your treaty and this declaration in combination, using these provisions to force upon the United States of America, the United States, and the United Nations trustees to return our gold without interruption. That must be understood, okay? Now let's go back to the Act of Albersaris, nineteen oh six. Article thirty-two. It's talking about gold bullions and gold coins in order to establish a bank. Can't establish a bank without gold, right? How to get your gold? Well, I just told you, the United Nations told you to enforce your treaties. That's where your strength is, Moors, your strength is in the treaties. But you also have to ratify certain declarations, certain conventions, right? The Charter, as well as ratifying your treaties itself. You must accede to the treaties in order to be able to enforce it with full powers. All right? Okay. Let's read Article thirty-one and thirty-two from the top. Article thirty-one, a bank shall be established in Morocco under the name of the State Bank of Morocco. What's happening? What should Moors take away from this? The Moors of Northwest America, as the world refers to as the West, right? The West, the Moors in Morocco, the empire, Northwest America, have to establish a bank. Why do we need a bank? Because we're going to get into commerce. Every state has its own bank. Once you have your bank, and especially once you have a national bank. the national bank will now, in harmony with the state independent banks, will now start to print and print money, right? And mint coins. That's the purpose of everything we've read thus far. We have to have gold in order for us to get to the next step of printing currency. We can't talk about electronic funds until we have gold. The gold controls everything as it relates to banks, all right? Okay, so first thing first, the Moors need their own bank. Each independent state needs its own independent state bank. They will establish a national bank once they have a competent centralized government, all right? And we're utilizing treaties to enforce our rights, okay? Okay, so, once we have a state bank, to exercise the following specified rights, which are granted to it by His Majesty the Sultan. So we know the word Sultan, replace it with the state for a period of forty years to date from the ratification of this act. You see right here, Moors? You gotta ratify the act. What's the act? The Act Algeseris, you gotta ratify it. Moors gotta learn this word, ratification, depository, and promulgation, right? These are instructions, okay? Article thirty-two. I know we're prolonging this, but, but we gotta get a basic understanding where we're going with chapter three. Article thirty-two, the bank, which will have power to carry on all transactions entering to the operations of a bank, shall have the exclusive privilege of issuing notes to bearer, payable on presentation and receivable for public dues throughout the Moors empire, right? It's the Moors empire. So what's happening? Look at this, Moors. The Moors have always said that the notes, the Federal Reserve notes of the United States of America are fraud, and that's true. What makes the United States of America's notes fraud? Well, first of all, because of their acts of Congress and all their Federal Reserve acts, their nineteen thirty-three basically letting the world know, we don't use gold no more. Now they have floating currency, they're not basing off what's called a gold standard. That's what makes their notes fraudulent, right? But what really makes their notes, their notes fraudulent? Is because they don't have any real gold. Their gold belongs to who? The Moors. So the United States of America, nor the United States, has any gold of their own because the United States of America and the United States is in Morocco, and they've been using Moroccan gold and minting Moroccan gold and claiming it as the United States of America's gold. And now they have to deposit or deposit our gold according to our treaties because our treaty in Article thirty-two talks about gold bullions and gold coins. They have to return because treaty's supreme law of land. You have to go back to your treaty of peace and friendship, Article twenty-two, that way you have all your effects, i.e. your gold, immediately returned to you without interruption. Then you enforce the declarations on them, the rights of indigenous people, et cetera. That must be understood, right? So this is a lot of information. Why are we going through this? The Moors have to understand one thing and one thing more. For years, we have been talking about having our own gold, our own currency, and claiming the United States of America's Federal Reserve notes are fraud. But the question is, what do the Moors have as gold and silver coin ourselves? The only way we can get it back and establish our own states, we have to utilize our treaties. The only way for us to enforce our treaties, first we have to establish constitutions. The constitution must be ratified, deposited, and promulgated, right? According to international law. Once we do all that, then we can start to set up our independent banks within our states and utilize the gold. Then we start to establish whatever currency that we're going to establish to control our financial institutions. Now let me let the Moors know something as I start to wrap up. You must understand that the United States of America always likes to loan money and currency to foreign states. They utilize their financial institution, which is a corporation with shareholders, to control other foreign states, such as they were controlling the Sultan at one time. Great Britain and Spain and France was controlling the Sultan because they loaned him money. Once a foreign state loans you currency or loans you gold, it immediately has a lien on your state. This is the reason why Gaddafi, Libya, Gaddafi of Libya wanted to establish, it was called the United States of Africa. Why did he want to do that? He wanted to establish a national bank on behalf of Africa that way they could have one universal coin, minted coin, that represented the entire continent of Africa. He was trying to make all the fifty-four states interdependent to come together under one state known as the United States of Africa, or at the very least, an organization, right? So that way they could control the gold as well as control the currency and the destination of their sovereignty, right? So the next thing you know, Gaddafi gets assassinated. Why? Because he was trying to rein in the order of the financial institutions known as banks. He wanted to control the currency and the gold of Africa. What can we learn from those states during the empire of Morocco? Well, look at the Kingdom of Morocco. Look at what's called Algeria. Look at what they call Tunisia. Look at what they call Libya. Look at Egypt. Look at Sudan. If you study their financial institutions, you will find out that the colonists always had one foot in, one foot out of their financial banking. The colonists have found a way to control all the empire by controlling the liens that they have on the empire Morocco and all their several different states. So therefore, where there's a lien on a Moroccan state, that means the foreigners control the administrator and they control the people and the destiny of that state. So Moors have to get to a point where we control our independent state banks as well as we control our own national bank because we control our own gold that's being minted, and then we control our own printed currency. That is what we must understand as we start to read chapter three. We gotta get the proper context, right? The proper concept. Why are we reading chapter three? Because chapter three is a reenactment about what we're about to do in the twenty-first century. The Act Algeseris of nineteen oh six must be reenacted in the twenty-first century, and we have to establish banks. And the only way to establish a bank, we need our gold. In order to get our gold back, we have to enforce treaties. The only way to enforce a treaty, you must have a constitution. The only way I have to have, have a constitution, it must be ratified, deposited, and promulgated with your three branches of government. So we want our gold back. Now let's go ahead and start using the power of the pen of the Metropolitan Council through the Deloitte and the Speaker of the House known as the Sayaraha. So we get these bills passed to start utilizing our legislation. That way we can pass that legis, legislation over to the counsel court. So the counsel court can now make its orders and judgments against any trustees that's holding on to our gold. I am with that. It is love.